There you go. Okay. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call this meeting to order. November fifteenth, looks like at seven oh three. Start our meeting. If you please stand, we'll do a prayer and a pledge. Now Peter will do, I'll be the prayer I guess, so. Heavenly Father, hey, thank you for letting us get here tonight. It's good, so what I thought, a short prayer. Everybody's personal intentions, but they've got to know everybody's got things going on. So look out, just remember that somebody you can talk to and help us with whatever we got going on. So God's help, amen.
Thank you.
I'd like to leave you to the Father. And now I would say this to America. To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, roll call, please.
Roger Burton. Peter Hogendike. Dan Sands.
Here.
Dwayne Owens.
Here.
Danny Wilcox. Mike Buck. Kevin Kirkwood. Eric Carlson. We have a quorum.
Staff report.
Uh, only have one item, and actually that's going before the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. That's the Hope Rains, um, Equestrian Facility that you had heard, oh, I don't know, I did a month ago or so. Um, so that's going before the B O C C tomorrow, so actually I don't quite have one, but I'll tell you that next meeting about that one.
Okay. All right, no consent agenda. Pipeline staff report? You want to mention something about that?
Sure, um, so we've been trying to include the pipeline on, you know, your packet about every month or so. Um, we do have kind of that online version as well that shows where, uh, different applications are. We've been, uh, kind of talking about trying to clean that up as we get more people there. I'd say, all right, we can, we can spend a little more time trying to get that one that's been sitting around for nine months or a year or something. So, uh, starting to make some effort towards, uh, some of those and, uh, bring some of those that have been hanging around for a while forward or get them off the list.
All right, good. Okay, citizen comments. Now this, this portion is citizen comments unrelated to any application. You'll have the opportunity to talk to the application when it's going through the process, so. All right, next, we're gonna go into the public, ah, we gotta approve them, we got some meeting minutes. Okay, did we review them? Meeting minutes for October. Any? Nope, okay, we have a motion to approve. I motion to approve the minutes. Gated, uh, ten eighteen. Twenty-two. Okay. Second, any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, gonna go under public hearing process, go through this, kind of give you a little overview. First of all, we're a volunteer board. That means we're quasi judicial commission. What that means, we compare, we judge the application to the codes and ordinances that we have in the county. That's our job, our job is not to make the rules, just to apply the code to the application that we have. Um, again, we are a volunteer group. Uh, first of all, presentation starts out with our staff giving the presentation. Next step is the applicant will have an opportunity to put in more information, to give a little more. After that, we'll ask for public comment. Upon completion of public comment, we'll try to rebut some of the things or answer some of the questions that came up within public comment. After we close comment, we will then go to the commission and they will ask questions. And at the end of that, we will vote on it. The vote can go one of three ways. We can vote two, and any vote we have is just a recommendation. We can recommend to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. So with that, we'll start our, uh, hearing with staff presenting on the special use by review. It's case SU nineteen zero zero eight-nine.
All right, good evening Commissioners and guests. My name's Matthew Carney with Elbert County Community and Development Services presenting to you the Prairie Ridge Buffalo Ranch Special Use by Review, case number SU one nine zero zero eight-nine. Um, to give a general overview of the location of the property where this, uh, application has been filed. It is in far eastern Elbert County, um, primarily accessed, um, from Lyman and I seventy and State Highway seventy-one on the eastern fringe of the county, more or less. Again, this is a special use by review application and ultimately the special use is for agritourism uses on agriculturally zoned parcels. Uh, the addresses are twenty-three oh one, or twenty-three zero zero one and twenty-two nine nine five, County Road two oh one, Lyman. The landowner and applicant, um, representing today is Ray Thiemann. Uh, a pre-application was held, um, some time ago in August of twenty nineteen. A community meeting held about two months later in October of twenty nineteen and a formal application filed in February of twenty twenty. We're here today, um, for the Planning Commission on November fifteenth with a Board of County Commissioners date on December fourteenth. Um, I can attest as staff that noticing was completed with affidavits filed for, uh, notice by mail, sign, and newspaper. Uh, to dive into some of the specifics a little bit more and the detail I'll cover on a little bit further here. Um, we're in a predominantly agriculturally zoned area of the county where many parcels are in excess of a section in size. Um, this is very sparsely populated for the most part. We might have some small, uh, parcels that are located in proximity. Ultimately, they're still several miles away by their access points. Believe there's a natural gas company and a church that are found in this map as well, but the scale is approximately about one mile per inch essentially, or you can see the section lines more or less. Going a little further, this application was unique in many ways. Um, given the size of the properties that we have in this area, um, being how large they are, and really the spirit of a special use by review to really identify the space that is being used for something a little bit more intense than what the zoning district would ordinarily allow. Um, this application identified a special use area that is approximately six acres in size, uh, give or take a little. Um, and it spans technically three properties, um, all under common ownership or mutual ownership of business interest. So ultimately, this six acre area, um, is in a relatively sparsely populated part of the county that is primarily devoted to ranching and other similar operations. Um, the special use area was carved based on the facilities that are utilized kind of as what I would call a home base for the special use. Where people would arrive on the property, where people might gather or make a purchase for a ticket and gathering space as well. So the area was really to identify the area that was being used commercially, um, by the applicant and his mutual business interests. So I'll, I'll jump around back and forth here a little bit with some of the site details as well. Um, the agritourism uses that have been requested by the applicant are primarily for buffalo tours. Um, this is an agricultural operation with, don't quote me on the number, I want to say about eight hundred buffalo. Yep, and there's, there's a significant ranching operation associated with this, but the intent of the applicant was also to really embody the spirit of agritourism and share this type of experience with those that are not familiar, um, with this part of Elbert County. Um, so this is primarily a use that occurs during the summer, approximately three times a week, um, June to August. The anticipation is for about fifty guests possibly with potentially larger groups to book by appointment, I want to say fifteen or twenty, um, based on what I've heard. Um, to really have these evening opportunities to be able to take, um, visitors out to view the buffalo in the wild. And this is what kind of complicated the special use matter a little bit. Um, the applicant and property owner owns a significant amount of acreage in the area. Um, he also leases a significant amount of acreage in the area and the buffalo, quite literally, is free to roam in all of that space. And really the tours are that opportunity for the applicant to be able to bring his visitors to go view the buffalo in the wild. Something more or less staff felt embodied agritourism, more or less. Um, this agritourism, as we're presenting it as a special use, also includes buffalo harvests, which is, um, something that the applicant does to control their stock of buffalo that they have and also to, um, rotate, um, kind of their stock numbers, um, during, uh, October to March or during those winter months. And that gives an opportunity for appointments for, um, very small groups to go and be able to hunt their own buffalo and be able to take, uh, the meat home with them after cleaning and such. And also, um, as a part of, um, looking into this, um, buffalo tour operation, uh, they also, uh, constructed it in an event space which they use for family gatherings, more or less, but they wanted to be able to offer that for perhaps small wedding parties or for graduation parties as well. Um, something that we did want to kind of tag down was really what, what's the number or what's the maximum amount of events that you plan on having on here that, um, could be scheduled kind of at a whim or whenever an appointment could be made. Um, opposed to the buffalo tours which have a more fixed timeline, um, during the year. So we hammered down the number of twenty and that's really the upper limit that we'd put on these special events. Overall, um, we wanted to discuss impact and impact really for something like this can be real, realized with the number of people that are coming to the property. Or even further, just the number of vehicles that are traveling this area, given kind of the sparsely populated, um, aspect of the community as well as just some of the infrastructure and how some of the roads are out there. Many of which being smaller than they actually are in terms of road and bridge standards. So tho- those are a lot of things that we wanted to factor into that as well to really limit the impact more or less for, um, this use. So in looking at the site plan, something that I wanted to display is the property lines that bisect the special use area. The properties that we have on the north here are by the applicant we have present tonight, Ray Thiemann, um, his business partner for this. Um, Sean and Carrie Bennett live in this property here as well. They've been, uh, working on this operation together and have filed this application together. I've been working primarily with Ray since I began with the county. Um, and this special use area cuts off just before, um, some of the leased land comes in, so we have it all contained within property owned by the applicants of record for this application. Um, we had the parking area measured, um, so that we have at least sixty spaces that could accommodate vehicle travel. Um, the assumptions made in the traffic letter were approximately three per car, which probably would have us at most thirty-five cars. Um, but, uh, some of the space that they have there is extremely level and reasonable for parking. Um, and we marked at least sixty spaces that could be, um, utilized for parking for this use. Um, the metal building is the building I alluded to that these special events would be occurring in, um, modest space with a commercial kitchen. Speaking of food for that matter, um, the expectation would be that if there's any food served here that it would not be prepared on site, that it would be catered. Um, but this has a modest space that could accommodate gatherings of up to a hundred people and has adequate restrooms for the approved OWTS as well. A pavilion is located up here as well that provides a semi-open space to either do a barbecue or a gathering as well. Um, kind of the selling point that the applicant has made to staff is that they provide a meal, um, or a cookout essentially with the pavilion. Um, to provide their buffalo essentially for consumption with their tours as well. So I'm looking at the referral responses, there were two conditions of approval that are in addition to the three that we normally tag with our applications. And it's primarily in relation to water and, uh, traffic. So two of, one of which I added relatively last minute after getting some confirmation from my, uh, C dot contact. Um, in response to some last minute comments that we had in regards to the traffic letter. Ultimately, it was found, um, that the number of persons that the traffic letter was based on, the assumptions made was on fifty persons maximum. So I did some last minute digging with the author of the letter, Curtis Rowe of Kimley Horn, um, discussed with him kind of those findings and if the impact or essentially the recommendations have changed. Ultimately, he doubled down on something that he had only mentioned in the letter was that the applicant would need to receive an access permit for Lincoln County Road three C. Which is the equivalent of County Road ninety-eight in Elbert County, um, when it transitions across that line. Um, so we were making or asking the applicant, um, with approval of this project to receive an access permit from County Road three C on, on State Highway seventy-one in Lincoln County. Um, in addition, um, the Colorado Division of Water Resources also requested that the well is re-permitted to also include this commercial use as well. Um, something of which the applicant has agreed to as well. All other concerns that were raised throughout the process, um, there were three referral periods that dated, two of which dated well before I even started with the county. And really, my goal was to complete a referral period that would essentially look at the application, um, as we have it today and ensure that the impact is understood. Um, that all requests of the applicant have been considered and that really the impact is understood by all of our reviewers. Something that wasn't immediately clear to me based on the records that we had from before my time even. So I'm looking at that. We have eight, pardon me, eight review criteria for a special use by review. Um, let me walk through those eight things with you right now. Um, so whether the use is in harmony or compatible with the surrounding area and neighborhood. Um, the special reuse by review request is essentially an accessory to the primary, the primary agricultural or ranching use on the property and surrounding properties affected by the special use. And given the location and really the density that's in this area, um, commercial type uses that could be referred to as agritourism really embodies a lot of what we have in the comprehensive plan in regards to economic development as well as recreation and tourism. That really the county should be encouraging economic development, um, that does balance commercial with agricultural. This is an agriculturally assessed property, but this gives an opportunity to consider it for additional commercial potential as well. It's ultimately what's being asked for here. And ideally, it's, we can't really find a better use that minimizes impact of surrounding lands. It is very, very well integrated with what's already going on on the property. It's geared towards ranching and it's an opportunity to educate others on ranching as well. And really the opportunity to encourage tourism in an area of the county that you wouldn't otherwise look for tourism is a very big point that I'd like to emphasize here. Um, criteria B, uh, whether the use will have an undue burden on available infrastructure. Um, this is something that I did want to confirm, um, before we brought it to hearing here, that we didn't have any asks of the infrastructure in the area. Primarily with the roads out there since there aren't really any other infrastructure points that would be applicable to this application. And segueing into criteria C, that was our finding essentially, that there wasn't going to be an undue burden on our road system. Therefore, the infrastructure that we have in that area, we have found to be suitable for this present request. Um, and for criteria D, uh, whether the use will cause significant air, odor, water, noise, or light pollution. Staff doesn't feel that these, that this proposed use would cause any forms of pollution that are aforementioned in this criteria. And especially the note that I'd like to make is that there's only one residence within a mile, or pardon me, three quarters of a mile of this use. And probably only five or six within a mile. So the density in this area where our job is to look at impact, it's when we're looking at this sparsely populated of an area. Um, the effects of those types of pollution are very hard to realize over very extreme distances. And even further, the types of uses that are proposed aren't believed to cause those types of pollutions in the first place. And segueing into san, uh, into criteria E, whether the sanitation requirements will be met. And, uh, we had a review, um, conducted with the third referral, um, with Public Health to ensure that we had a firm understanding of what the applicant was proposing in terms of sanitation. And the OD, OWTS review that was completed by, uh, Elbert County Public Health was sufficient. And they essentially acknowledged that the sanitation for the proposed uses is sufficient. Housed primarily in the, in the metal, the primary metal building and gathering space. Um, criteria F, um, whether the use will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened. As I touched on on criteria D, kind of given the separation that we're seeing between this property and this use between that and others. And its ability to really camouflage itself as ranching itself, you're interacting with the livestock more or less. We don't feel that any advanced forms of buffering or screening needs to be completed for this because there is a natural buffer in terms of the separation between this use and others in the area. Um, looking at criteria G, uh, whether the use will be otherwise detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. Um, we have found essentially that the proposed agritourism uses will not be detrimental to Elbert County residents, present or future. And that these uses more or less, uh, serve to highlight the ranching lifestyle of this area of the county and improves the county's tourism opportunities. That agritourism serves to educate and improve the understanding of agricultural practices, garnering interest and respect for a rural way of living that serves to benefit the county residents both short and long term. And, uh, criteria H, um, for supplemental standards, um, and this is something that we had grappled with during the review process. We do have something called agricultural recreation identified within the zoning code as a temporary use. That's essentially not what's being asked for here. By pursuing the special use by review, the intent was that this would be a permanent use, that we'd have an expectation that agritourism would be occurring on this property. Whereas the agricultural recreation, as we do have supplemental standards for which lay out, um, its standard essentially as a time restricted, no more than sixty days temporary use. Um, we wanted to steer clear of that. I did, I did want to identify that though, if any of you did have any concerns potentially over agricultural recreation as it is in our zoning code as a supplemental standard. Um, with that in mind, um, based on the findings, um, of the criteria that we have before us. Essentially that the, the project and proposal is in general conformance with the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. That is generally compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. It will not have an undue burden on available infrastructure. It will not unduly increase traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. It will not cause significant forms of pollution. It will meet all sanitation requirements. It will be buffered from other uses and properties. It will not result in significant impact to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and landowners of the surrounding area. And there are no supplemental standards applicable for this proposed use. Therefore, CDS recommends the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Prairie Ridge Buffalo Ranch Special Use by Review. Case number SU one nine zero zero eight-nine, subject to the following conditions. Uh, the applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Um, the special use by review shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibit is recorded. And recordation of this exhibit and documentation to occur within a hundred eighty days of the Board of County Commissioners' approval. Uh, condition five, that the applicant shall re-permit their well to include the requested commercial uses. And condition five, the applicant shall receive an access permit for Lincoln County Road three C at State Highway seventy-one. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thiemann? Do you have anything to add?
Yeah. A little bit forgotten, and, uh, so anything that we can do to, you know, improve or, 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 or even, you know, just highlight what goes on out there, I think is gonna be beneficial. Uh, one of the things that we thought when we, uh, first did this was, the idea was we would catch all this traffic going down I seventy. And, you know, utilize, we got twelve motels in Lyman, we'll gather up all those people and bring them out and do tours. And that's not what we're finding. What we're finding is that the people who are interested in what we're doing are the local people who have family or relatives who come to town. And instead of having to bring them to Denver or Carr Springs to entertain them, now they can come and stay right in, within their own community. Uh, we'll have, uh, sometimes, uh, certain families might come two or three times during the summer, bringing different guests. So I think, uh, we've been very well received, the whole idea and that whole community. Uh, all of our neighbors are very supportive of us. And as a matter of fact, they're the ones that are using our buildings. Uh, we, we had a graduation and that, you know, that kind of thing. So I think that, uh, everyone out there considers us to be an asset to the community. And so that would be my only comments.
And if you have any, you know, particulars on, I mean, he pretty much described what we do, but if you have any more particulars, I can get into more detail of how the tours work and all that kind of thing. But I think he generally gives a, a good recap of it.
Okay. I'm sure we'll have questions, I'm sure there. All right, so at this point, we have no, no other public comments, so questions?
Question, um, so there's no community input from the community meeting? Other than it was all positive, how did the community meeting go? Uh, it was three years ago, it was like, uh, in two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, nobody showed up. Yeah, there, there was nobody that, that came. You know, I, I talked to all my neighbors individually. On this one, when we did the comment period here, I've had, uh, had two calls from the neighbors. Both of them were, were very positive. They wanted to come support me, that they would be more than willing to come and support. I think, I think it's pretty, pretty much clear what we, what we got going.
How many miles are you from Lyman?
Uh, we're, uh, we're, we're, we're three miles from the prison, which depends where you, where you consider Lyman. If the prison is considered Lyman, we're three miles from there, but it, actually we're probably five miles from this.
So Matt, is there any reason that we would need the, uh, comment referral from, uh, Lyman Fire Department? And I noticed they didn't respond.
I re, I noticed from the previous files that were stored with this application that they had not weighed in previously during the other referral periods. Um, in looking for a contact with their district for other applications, I did track down a contact for their district. However, um, in my best attempts to try to re-establish contact for the review of this application, I wasn't able to get any input from them on this.
They did come, when, when we originally started this, that they came out and did the inspection and everything. Uh, so, so they, you know, I, I guess basically what they've done is came out, did the inspection, but didn't refer anything to you, is that kind of where it, where it amounts to? But I mean, they've came, they, they actually came out.
So the-
If we're under that fire district.
Are you under?
Yeah, yeah, we'd be in that fire district, so. So they've been out and made, made a review and considered everything being, that's all I know about it.
Sir, can I ask you a question? Is, is, uh, is there any requirement, uh, on, apart from our county, on, um, being close to the correctional facility? Or any, uh, conditions or things? Okay. I never knew if there was anything.
Yeah, no, I mean, because their restrictions don't go out that far. I, the only thing that we've ever had involved with the prison is, you know, they come out and do some practices because, you know, escape routes, we might be included as this escape route, so they'll come out and they'll say, okay, this kind happens or whatever, you know, so we've had those kinds of discussions. I think we're, we're far enough away that we don't know.
Can I, I had a couple more things, and it, and Matt- Can I, I had a couple more things, and, and Matt, thank you for covering the two things that I wanted to, um, touch on is, so, uh, is this being approved for fifty on the S U R, or is it a hundred? Because, um, it seems to say fifty, but with up to a hundred, and I, I didn't know how that sits in a-
Yeah, and, and that's really the way that the narrative is worded. Um, we do have that included as a note on the special use exhibit. Perhaps I should have provided that as a standalone document opposed as the general notes on the exhibit. Um, but a hundred is really the cap that we have for, um, the special events and for the tours, yep. Um, but really what, uh, Ray has tried to emphasize is that what he expects is fifty, but he doesn't want to be restricted by the possibility of perhaps maybe-
A little bit over.
A little bit over, essentially. So, we wanted to be able to have that flexibility, so that's why we set the bar at a hundred, even though the expectation is really only for fifty.
And I think part of that came about because we're using, you know, the event for graduations, things like that, so that's where the hundred came in. I, I mean, realistically, we will never do more than fifty in the tour, because it just becomes physically too difficult for us to handle. Right now, we're limited at forty, that's what, that's the most, we use two trailers and we do twenty in each one, so we're basically limited tours at forty-
Yeah.
But the event center at a hundred, so, but you can't, you know, we're, we're not separating them, so you just put in the hundred, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify because I, I know Matt-
And that's because of two separate types, they're totally separate issues-
Yes, sir.
-when we're doing the event versus the tours.
The, the other thing was on the water that you had talked about, Matt, um, with the, the permit number eleven four ninety, um, it said it, it, it wasn't, um, acceptable as a commercial well or commercial use, and I, and I understand you addressed it, but I wanted to confirm that it was that permit that is, um, being dealt with and not the other permit that was on another six, sixty?
Yeah, the, that particular well permit, that number, um, is associated, or is the well permit that would need to be re-permitted to include those commercial uses. Um, the other one, I believe, falls on the adjacent property owned by the benefit, uh, the Bennetts, they're, they're partners in this use. Um, but this one particularly, the, um, eleven forty, or-
Yes, sir. Because, well, we, we have basically three wells out there that, that support the operation. Two of the wells come to my house, one of the wells comes to Kerry and Johnson, and that's tied up, teed off into the building, so that is the well. I mean, here's the issue is, and, and we still have to resolve with, with the, uh, water, because we use hardly any wa- the, the water that will get used is flexible, uh, because we, there is no other use. We, we furnish bottled water, we, every, you know, and he said, we, we, we're not gonna, we're not a restaurant, we don't want to get into that, what we do is, is very limited, uh, we don't want to, we cater if somebody else is using the building, what we do is cook outdoors with a hamburger, um, all we do in the kitchen is theirs, we do a pot of crop, of beans, basically. That's, that's our cooking. So, uh, and so very little water is going to be used, and so that's, I, you know, I, and I don't know what the, what the breakoff is, when, when are you considered commercial? And when it's not, but whatever, whatever it takes to get done, we'll do, but I, in my mind, I, I don't even see where it's an issue. I think it's, to me, it's a non-issue issue, but we'll see what, what the state says.
Yeah.
Because we're very, very limited waters involved in the whole thing.
Who's requiring the commercial well?
Uh, the Division of Water.
And they did, I, if I remember correctly, when they sent it, they said, I, I was thinking they said they may require. I don't think they ever really specified, because I, I'd made a couple of calls to them, but I've never gotten good response back, and so I'm, I'm not exactly sure myself where we're at.
Yeah. The verbiage was that they would not, at least in this current version, that they, it would not be acceptable as a, uh, commercial, but I, I, you know, I, I, I'm not having a problem with, um, it being handled, I, I'm just wanting to clarify that it is-
Which, which well it is.
And an S U R is a commercial designation, so you couldn't have that well without having a commercial designation on the well, right?
Yeah, and, and really what I rely on is the feedback from the state. They look at the well permits that are applicable, what the applicant will provide to us, what well are we using for this? And if those uses that are kind of encompassed by that well permit, if that does not fall in there, all that the Division essentially is asking for, that that well is re-permitted to include those commercial uses as well, just so that they have an understanding of what the well's being used for, even if that usage is still a very low number.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Hey, Matt, can you pull up the picture that shows the surrounding property?
Um-
That one.
Sure.
Mr. Thiemann, if you don't mind, I'd kind of point out, um, the areas where the tours will, uh, be conducted.
Yeah, the primary, we, we can see where the house is, the section to the, to the, uh, right.
That quarter section.
To the north and to the west. There's all the, um, the-
That quarter section up there on the north, northeast.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, that section right there, that's the primary use, that's leased land, we lease-
Not a quarter section, it's a full section.
Uh, because, and, and that, the reason that is, is that tends to be our summer pasture. Uh, we also use these patches over here, the buffalo, uh, these patches here, we run cattle on those there, uh, we lease from the, the neighbors. We, we basically have all of this, this is, uh, state lease here, right here, this is owned by the state, uh, right, yeah, this whole piece here is owned by the state, so we run that. This is, this is owned here, this is what's owned right in this area here, so this is these, these, these things. So, that was the reason that we didn't want to include everything, just because, you know, the, 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 the review is for a, a permanent, but a lease may not be, so it doesn't make sense to include those in there, so, and, and those are only variable parts. The commercial part of it, like you said, is, is in the red area, that's where the commercial part is. Basically, the rest of it is just drive out and look at the buffalo and drive back.
Hang on a second, Mr. Thiemann. Uh, as I'm looking at this, so, we're, we're asking, in, in the, the write-up of the lease or the, uh, special use, we're talking about tourism, we're talking about, uh, hunt, we're talking about those kind of things, and it sounds like there's a, a bigger area than just that commercial section that we're talking about here. Am I, am I missing the point here?
Because the hunt is not going to be on that six acres.
Right.
Right, no, the hunts would be out in the, like, in these areas here.
Well, it, and, and really the logic behind this, the, kind of the staff reasoning behind this, is that when you have lands like this that might be changing on a frequent basis, um, I'm looking for the common denominator essentially, where is the commercial activity centered around? Because more or less, the buffalo being isolated on the-
Commercial use is all of it, not just that commercial section. Because you're going to be running tours out there, you're going to run, you know, sing, single guided hunts out there, you're going to be doing those kind of things, um, away from that commercial property as well. So, it's for, for both.
In a way, but really how I'm addressing the special use is that we have a special use area that is finite, but we are considering the special use as the consideration to use the surrounding owned and leased land, um, for the buffalo tours and the buffalo harvest, noting that we did need a common denominator, that we can identify clearly as commercial where that use would begin and end. That's really the logic that we're getting behind.
That, that works for me, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out the, the logic. And so, you know, the other question I have is, from a tourism perspective, is there a insurance obligation to make sure that the folks that are out there are either acknowledging the risk associated with being in a, the back of a, of a trailer and, and being dragged all over the place?
Yeah, yeah, I, we've addressed that with our, our insurance, we're with, uh, Michael Dwyer's Insurance there, it's in Lyman.
Perfect, thank you. Those are my questions.
You, yeah, yeah, I think Matt mentioned that you had, are running about, uh, eight hundred head to-
Yeah, but not, not in this one acre.
Okay.
If you looked at, if you remember the picture when you were looking at-
Yes, sir.
-you could see the feedlot.
Yep.
Okay, so that's the concentrated amounts-
Yep.
-of, of the buffalo are, are in there. Because what we run is three hundred and fifty cows, and then we take those calves and we run them in there, and then those yearlings, because a, a buffalo takes longer to mature.
Mature.
And so that's the reason we end up probably around that nine hundred, so you get three hundred and fifty cows, three hundred calves, three hundred yearlings, and then we sell packs. But, three hundred and fifty cows, it, what we have right here is forty cows, the rest of them, we have, uh, we rent from, uh, Savory, Savory Institute, from, uh, south of, uh, of the Strasburg area, that, that we have, uh, eight thousand acres there that we lease. Uh, I grew up down by Rush, so we have, uh, my grandma's, my dad's, my property down by Rush, which we run the cows down there, and then Parker Ag, uh, we, we lease from them, uh, and we have a herd there. So, yes, we have individual cow herds, which takes multiple acres. This is the more concentrated feedlot, and basically our show herd.
Well, I was just curious about the, it looked like you're year-round feeding it at some point with, uh, a bunch of those guys.
Yeah, so, because we do everything, we're, we're, we're a totally grain-finished operation. Yeah, we, we, we grass our cows and we grain our, our feeders.
Thank you, that's cool. When does this go before the board?
Uh, December fourteenth.
And you haven't started your application with the state?
No.
We can't send this forward. I mean, here's what, here's what could happen, and, and it's really, Mr. Thiemann, we're kind of in a, a little bit of a spot here, is that, well, we don't have verification that you have your commercial well permit. The state's requiring that you have that well permit before you can function, that's their side of it. Our county probably doesn't matter. So, if we approve this and send this forward to the board, then the board is stuck having to approve something without an approved well permit. And that's one thing, then the road, the other part is the road. You've got to get, you've got to get, um, access to that, um, to the road there in, uh, Lincoln County, right? Don't you have to before?
I mean, when issues like this have typically arisen later in the process, we still have conditioned, and I have monitored those as they've gone on.
We, we do, Matt, but the thing is, is we can't, he hasn't even started the permit process with the state. So, there is, what we're doing is, if we move this forward, okay, without that permit, then it's going to go before the board, I know what the board's going to say.
Are they going to be frustrated with us?
No, they're not, they, they, well, they-
Because we're pushing some-
Oh, I don't, and, and that's not, that's not the issue, whether they're frustrated with us or not, but it's just going to come down to, they can't approve that until they have-
So, what are you suggesting? You're suggesting it continues?
Well, what, well, we either continue it until all the, all the parts and pieces are, are part of the application, yeah. And I hate to say that, but we're really in a position, we can't approve something where the state has an improvement, because they have authority over the water. So, the county goes and approves it, then we're in violation with the state, so, I mean, we're really kind of stuck.
No, because one of the conditions of approval, okay, is the water.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
You, you don't, it doesn't get approved unless the water's done.
I, well, it does, but when it goes before the board, they're going to say the same thing, Ben. They're going to look at it and say the same thing. So, it's either going to get, it, because they can't approve it till they have that document that states, because right now, we're not even certain that the state's going to approve it. There's, it's hesitant in here, from what I read, that, so really, it either gets continued here, or we vote to approve it, move it forward, and it gets continued at the board. I mean, really, because-
I, I, just that we have approved-
We have.
-special uses in the past with the same condition.
We have, and the one thing is, is that the board is really unhappy with us.
Okay, okay, that's the case, then, okay.
And I wasn't going to blame it, but we have gotten told how many times that, you know, you guys got to bring us, so, and we've got a, we've got a road permit, we've got a road there in, in, uh, Lincoln County that we got to deal with, too.
Yeah.
So, there's two outstanding parts.
I mean, I've always just assumed that when something is approved, subject to-
Right.
-then, then you approve it, and if those don't happen, it don't happen. I, I don't know, that's, that's just my opinion, but, uh-
And, and being on the board, I don't want to approve something that, that is contingent on somebody else, another entity, having to, to approve it. Like, me approve something that the fire protection hasn't approved, me approve something that the state hasn't approved. It all comes down to, then when we do that, that's us in a bad, that puts all the liability on the, on the other entity that's actually having to do the final step, and it shouldn't. It should all be done and all be presented to, to actually the planning commission, or, not really, the, the board, where it's all, all in.
It won't make me no difference, because I've been three years-
I know.
-going around with this crazy-
And I, and I'm sorry, I-
It's the way it is, I mean, it don't matter to me at all what you do. I mean, you can do whatever you want. This is what I was told that we would do this way, so, yeah.
You know, and all you, what's, what it's going to take is you're going to have to get the permit from the state. That's what, you're going to have to apply for a, a commercial permit. If they wouldn't have put that in the application, then let's you use your, your current wells would be fine, but it's in there that they're requiring, that's why I asked the question. I saw it, I wanted to confirm it. It's in there that the state's requiring a commercial well. I don't know why, because it, I-
To, to clarify.
And that, that would work, if you could get them to give you something that you could-
They'll either, they'll either do an application or they'll waive it.
And, and that would, if you brought a waiver to us, yes, that would give us, okay, then you can function under your current well status.
I thought, I thought I had it dealt with, they had a lady call up, wanted to take a tour the other day that works for the, for the, for the state, and so I said, okay, if you come on out, but I would like to make, give you a contact with somebody that's, uh, there, that, that knows something about what's going on here in these wells, and, of course, she never got back to me, so that was way too much.
I've heard that before.
Yes, it's a, it's, it's a difficult thing to get a hold of them.
Sir, and I, and I am really sorry that kind of this, this, this is going this way, so.
So, one, one last question, Mr. Thiemann, are you already operating this agribusiness or agritour, agritourism?
I've been, I've been taking people out on tour for twenty years.
Yeah.
This is, we built the building and all of that kind of thing, I mean, I, people have, I mean, we live out in eastern Colorado, I mean, no, my neighbors could give a crap less if I have somebody go out and ride around in my pasture looking, you know, they don't, what do they care? You know? We're doing this to formalize for you guys, that's what we're doing. So, you can charge me more taxes, let's be honest, that's the whole purpose of it, is so you can get some more taxes out of it. So far, we've got more, more than twenty thousand dollars in inspection fees and type things just to this county. I can show you the blank checks, or the checks that I wrote, over twenty thou- They took the building that we built, now I've got now on my soapbox, they took that building that I built for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and when I got my building permit, it was for five hundred and forty-five thousand is what they based it on, because of the square footage. I says it's not finished inside, we don't have walls, it's not, we have to use the housing standard. So, that cost me twelve thousand dollars to get a friggin' building permit for that damn building, which is a pole barn.
Okay.
So, you got, now you got me off on my soapbox, but yes, I have, I have paid my share. We started three years ago on this, I, Matt's the first person who's really worked with me. How many people have we worked with in this Dago County? Three or four? I mean, I, I agree, COVID was part of it, but it, it's been pretty inept up here, too, so.
Well, I hope your, your visit to the state or your conversation with the state goes a better way so you can get this-
I, I would hope so, yeah, okay. Yeah, we've been, we have, we've been trying.
The other thing, Matt, is this, uh, these S U Rs, I know you're trying to segregate a, a piece of property, but, you know, it's a special use, not a special area, and when we define, I don't know, you know, taxing purposes, that's unrelated to what we're looking at here. We're looking at the use of the property, and, and the special use is for use of the full property, everything's got, really, he's take, doing tours and hunting expeditions and everything all around there. So, really, whether it, whether it's five acres there in the center or the whole area, I don't know.
So, how does that work if I lose a lease? And I've got a part of this S U R, or I picked up another piece, so does every time I change leased ground, I have to come in and reaplot?
If I might respond real quickly, I think that-
It could, because it is really confusing, because I kind of, you, you know-
We, we've kind of wrestled with it a little bit as well. Um, the assessors have, um, tried to identify the areas that would be used on, uh, as more of a commercial type of area, so that's why the six acres, you're right, the buffalo roam here and- So that's why the six acres, you're right, the buffalo roam here and there, and this section, this leased property, whatever it might be, the tours would follow them, you know, around the property. We, we acknowledge that, we accept that, we identify that, but if they moved over to another property, and he's basically got the buffalo over there, it's, it's not dramatically different than what's going on in any of these properties might be looking at. That kind of central core area where the parking might be, where you might eat, where you might have bathrooms, where you might have more of an almost commercial look and feel, that's an area that the assessor would like to more clearly identify, rather than the entirety of that property being, if I, you know, taxed at a different or commercial type of rate. So it is, in some respects, trying to identify and, and honor that more smaller area for those types of purposes.
Why do we have to do that?
Well, otherwise, he'd be taxed for commercial on the thousand acres or whatever it might be.
Wants to tax that five acres, that's the assessor's business. Truly, okay? What we're looking at is special use, okay? That's, you, you got this property, this huge property, and we're looking at the special use that, that impacts that whole section of property. And that's what the special use by review, this is outside the norm, so we're, we're, we're doing is we're reviewing it and allowing a different type of operation, a different kind, kinda use of that property. We have no ties to what the assessor wants to tax.
But we don't wanna set him up for.
No, but if the assessor is gonna pick that small part, it's just like a dog, dog kennel. The assessor will pick that part where the dog kennel is, the rest of it may be, the dogs will run all over.
The, the truth is, though, like, to hunt on somebody's property, even around me is, uh, like, three and five acre properties, and people hunt, mostly bow, um, type hunting. They have permits for the larger range, right? And they sort of, they're able to hunt on the larger D O W range. Um, I don't see hunting, my opinion, I don't see hunting, uh, uh, or harvesting buffalo on that property as something that requires containment of, of a, a s- commercial area.
No.
And same with people visiting the buffalo out on a open range, so I, I, I'm, I'm not.
Everything that's allowed, everything that he's doing.
Yes.
Anybody can do on their property.
That's what I, yeah.
Okay, I own a hundred acres, I could take, put somebody in my truck, take them around and show them the buffalo, show them the cattle, show them everything else, okay? I could take them out there, we could shoot something.
Exactly.
I mean, really, so it comes down to that. That's why, what the assessor is doing is trying to find a business part of that area, which is that meeting area there in the center. And they're trying to figure, they're trying to get a percentage to, to tax that at twenty-nine percent, the commercial rate. That's what they're trying to do, and that's a small part. The rest of your property is what anybody else can do with their.
Yep.
So anyway, just a thought. Okay, and it might take some headache, because what the assessor does, I, I think is unrelated to what you guys are doing, but it's just a. Anyway, so with that said, where we're at is.
So, so, give me a little clarification here, so are we saying then, I mean, I understand about the, the two issues there, but if we don't need to add rented land and all that to this.
No. Where you conduct your operations, if that changes, your S U R is gonna cover wherever you, if that change, within those boundaries, if it changes, if the lease changes or something, it's gonna be, you do your operation in a different part of that area, so.
Hunting is part of agricultural.
Yes.
I'm glad you're all agreed on.
Okay. Um, now, where we're at is, you guys, I think where we're at is where we need to.
I think a lot, thank you. So, so Dan, let me ask you a quick question. So Danny, the, the holdup is the last paragraph on page twenty-four of our packet, where it says, in order to use the existing well for commercial use, their well permit allowing such use must first be obtained. Yeah, and then it goes on to say, the ability to obtain a well permit will be determined at the time that the application is submitted to and reviewed by the groundwater commission.
The state. Yeah, so it comes down to, they haven't even give us, given us a good clue as if they're, all they said is they're gonna review it. So, I mean, we're really kinda, it's a mess. And I know if I send that to Grant, he's gonna scream.
We'll have another work session.
So, with this, so with what we really should do, we really should continue it here. Until, and keep it open, so that you don't have to go back through all this stuff again. And then, and you go, go talk to the state, see if you can get a variance, something else, go talk to the county, so you can get access to, to, what is it, Road Three?
And that's just an access permit.
That's an access permit, that should be easy to get. Come back with those two things, then we, it's, it's an easy. Yes.
So, I move that we continue case S U nineteen zero nine, until it's decided we have a, uh, answer to the water dilemma and the road dilemma.
If I, if I might interject, if we continue it to a date certain, then we won't have to re-advertise it. Um, if we.
Can we in case, have to do that?
That's the, that's the problem.
You know, we can do it to a date certain, we can, because what will happen is, okay, at that date, it isn't done, so we continue it again.
Danny, any concern with the fires? Do you have any concern with the fire department not resolving?
No, because I know why.
We, we don't know for sure when things are gonna be resolved, we don't know for sure how soon the state might respond on water, uh, nor Lincoln County on access, so we are kind of, just kind of guessing a little bit.
We are, we are.
Um, I'm, I might suggest, um, going like February seventh as a possible date.
I think that might give you time to see if you can get something out of the state, because that's gonna be. That would be good.
By, by when, I'm sorry?
February.
February seventh.
So I'll amend my, uh.
My motion?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, for case number S U nineteen zero nine, uh, to a date certain of February seventh, to resolve the issue associated with the water situation and the kind of the water situation.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Sir, what that does is that sets you up so you don't have to re-notice, do all that stuff. You're literally, your next meeting's set for the seventh, see if you can get the state to give you something. Mr. Thiemann, thank you.
Thank you, I love the project, I do.
Next item on our agenda is the rattlesnake restated service plan. There was a noticing issue with that, so that's been rescheduled to December twentieth, when they could get all the noticing done that was needed. So that will be, uh, rescheduled to your December twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting, be in the same room at seven o'clock.
Okay, that's been rescheduled, do we have anything else?
Yes, the work session for the housing needs assessment.
Yes, um, I would like, Roger had wanted to participate in this, he did. Uh, there was some, and I know Peter would probably wanna participate in it. I, that's kinda information, I, could we schedule that at a different time so we could have all of us at least?
Um, we could do a couple of things, we have the consultant sitting here, uh, waiting to, um, present to us.
Oh, that's right, he's on, yeah.
They, they're coming through via Zoom here. Roger, I talked with him earlier today, um, and he said he would try to, um, watch through, you know, our online kind of experience here. So hopefully he'll be able to see that. So I, I might suggest we go ahead and do that, Peter could do the same thing. Um, if after we're done here, perhaps the consultants could provide, uh, the deck that they're using, and we could forward that along to them, so they could see the, the PowerPoint. You've had the, uh, the packet of information for at least a couple of weeks, so hopefully there were some, um, comments that maybe you guys came up with. So, I mean, we can do whatever you would like, but I just wanted to give you some kinda background on that.
If he's ready to go, then, okay.
What, what this does, kind of for, this is a legislative process, so, you know, you have some opportunity to kinda be differently involved. Um, you know, so that would give you some different ways to be involved and kind of on the front end here. I realize I've gone through this some, but, um, you know, if we present it later, it's gonna be pretty much almost a, uh, done product at that point. So you might have opportunity to interact a little bit more.
One second, getting this installed for audio for our presenters here.
Can you hear us, Matthew?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can the others hear us?
Yes, I'm gonna get the audio sorted out here as I get you up on our main screen here. And you guys will have the ability to screen share as needed, and we can see you both just fine. Yep. Yep, whenever you guys are ready to get going on the presentation, we got you live on our screen here and audio setup.
Okay, so we'll, we'll start and let us know if there's technical difficulties, as they used to say. Uh, I'm Aaron Bruin, with me is Deborah Jeans, as you can see us, and Andrew Ratcher is gonna be doing most of the presentation. But I'll start off with a brief introduction and, uh, some comments about housing and economic development. We, we wanna review some slides that relate to economic development and housing needs. We'll present some key findings with housing needs assessment, we'll present some recommendations. Look at the iconic technology names on this slide. They illustrate an essential point, that economic development is no longer about that famous real estate maxim, location, location, location. Today, the most valuable space is actually cyberspace, not physical. And so most successful places and communities in the future will have to be created or recreated rather than simply found. Future economic success will be determined how well, by how well the county and its towns respond to the economic, technological, and cultural fabric of the time. Housing related community services is often an essential ingredient of economic development success. Now, this next slide summarizes the ingredients for economic development success in some cases vital communities. For both economic and community success, the essential that public, private, and nonprofit groups work together to accomplish goals and objectives. This requires what's called social capital. Social capital is the political relevance structure of a place. And the culture and the personal relationships that become essentially ingredients, uh, essential ingredients of successful place making and economic development. In a world of freely moving physical and financial capital, only social capital remains tied to specific locations. So the process that look, that, uh, provides for, uh, rent use, uh, housing in the built environment is really important. And given that many businesses today are footloose, a shift in emphasis can be justified from attracting, from attracting specific businesses to instead attracting and holding better educated and skilled individuals and creating the conditions for the first son, the nearest to God. This is where housing and economic development, they're all, they're inside. So this slide summarizes the importance of housing to economic development. A community without housing will be at a competitive disadvantage in attracting and retaining benefits to economic development. This is because the supply and price of housing available directly affects the ability of friends to attract and retain labor, and how much it costs for friends to employ that labor. Housing also affects productivity of workers. If you don't have enough affordable housing, workers, and especially lower wage workers, might share housing and reduce costs or seek housing further away and create hunger to use and makes workers less productive. Not to mention the transportation costs, which has lately become quite costly due to the high price of gas. There's also a demand for, uh, still over effective housing in economic development. If residents and workers are forced to spend more of their income on housing, all else being equal, this means they spend less on other goods and services in the local economy. This reduction in demand means pure retail, the restaurant, service uses, and other amenities will be supported in the community over time. So the process of building housing itself stimulates local economic activity, promotes jobs and income along a wide skill spectrum. New housing development activity generates direct income, but also generates income and employment indirectly. So as the builders purchase materials, equipment, and services from other friends in the regional economy, and as workers spend some of their earned income multiply, and everything from retail goods and services to healthcare and all housing, housing itself is good economic development activity. So, we, we, we'll focus the rest of this presentation, and maybe you can take it over from here, on the housing study. But we just wanted essentially to make the basic point that housing is part of economic development. We know the county is working on that, and it should be looked at as interdependent and mutually reinforcing, uh, in that way. So can you lead us through, uh, the housing success?
Sir, so in addition to the economic development, like, it's, you know, the primary purpose of the housing needs study was really to inform the, uh, decision-making of long-term, uh, strategic planning of both the county and its towns and municipal partners. Uh, some objectives were to quantify housing needs, explain the factors contributing to those needs, understand what's around in local housing markets, and also to demonstrate the economics of building and producing, uh, new housing in the county. That latter piece is important because it helps to identify or pinpoint, uh, the types and price points of housing that the private market will or probably won't easily provide in future. The next couple of slides, we're gonna highlight a couple of existing conditions, trends, that, that they help the creative base discussion about housing in the county. First being that the existing housing supply is not very diverse, I guess you could say. Detached, uh, single-family homes on lots exceeding five acres in size represent your predominant type of housing. About fifty-three percent of the countywide inventory today. Supply of multifamily units, detached housing, duplexes, uh, units considered to be made-of-facture housing and so forth, are well under ten percent of your district inventory. There's also, uh, different sub-markets below within the county. Um, that's relative because housing demand and needs within these areas are likely to be different. Um, backwards, look at the need of housing in county, I think. Backwards, look at the age of housing in county, I think I like it pretty well. So the map that's up on the screen here is the share of housing in East zip code that's at least fifty years in age. So on the far northwest end here, it could be Elizabeth and Parker, Parker zip codes. You've got less than five or seven year inventory, more than fifty years old. But the east sort of Alphacilla and Madison, you've got more than two-thirds of the existing units are greater than fifty years old. So while housing age by itself is an indication of obsolescence per se, communities that have aging housing and stagnant economic conditions are usually more likely to have challenges with housing payments. It's also typically more of a challenge for the private market to create new housing at scale in economic. This slide is reviewing some of the pricing trends we put together based on county assessor records. And the gist is that new construction housing, at least that has been built recently, tends to be lower cost than a lot of your existing resale inventory. A large lot, ranch housing will command higher prices that are associated with new construction homes frequently having smaller lots. So for example, the average resale price of a home on a thirty-five acre lot or larger is about three hundred eighty bucks a square foot for several months of twenty twenty-two. If you look at lots a little bit smaller, that's five to thirty-five acre category, the price per square foot is three hundred and ten bucks. The absolute price was something a million dollars for a home in the size. And this is where I'll remind you that more than five in every ten housing units in the entire county are single-family homes on lots that exceed five acres. The average price of a new home built in the last couple of years is a bit less than six hundred and twelve thousand dollars for a two hundred and sixty bucks per foot. The implication is that new development isn't only adding housing to the private market, typically of consumption, but doesn't hold true in overcount. The next couple findings, we're going to review more demographic in nature. Historically, the growth in the county is driven by debt migration or the natural population increases or changes. Significant sources of demand for housing have continued to originate from households essentially seeking more affordable housing that was available elsewhere except for Denver or the lesser extent of Colorado spring. Those of this migration, twenty fourteen through twenty twenty, at least when there's available data, has been coming from the neighbor in Douglas or half of the counties. And this trend is likely to continue so long as, you know, housing prices remain elevated elsewhere in the region.
Second point, demographics we would make is that the population has aged quite a bit over the last twenty years. As of twenty twenty, more than a third of your county population was aged fifty-five and older, which was up from fourteen percent in two thousand and twenty. So that's a pretty big shift over a relatively speaking short period of time. The implication is that local planning policies, housing developers, you know, need to be well attuned and cognizant of the needs and preferences of this growing older age population base. This slide is reviewing some of the historical commute patterns of both county workers and county residents. And essentially, the gist is that the county continues to export a significant share of its labor. According to the most recent data available, almost ninety percent of all working residents were employed outside of Elbert County. The commute shed is basically the I twenty-five, I two twenty-five corridors with the top locations being essentially in Arapahoe, Douglas, and Denver counties. And we bring this up only to make the point that continued growth elsewhere in the commute shed in the region is likely to continue to stimulate local housing demand. And also, if more people have lived and worked in the county, this will be beneficial for economic development reasons. While almost ninety percent of the residents of the county are commuting out, the inverse is true for people who work in the county. Most of them are commuting in. This workforce is frequently challenged to afford or even sometimes just find suitable local housing options. Up on the screen here, we've got a little comparison, but essentially, twenty twenty-one, the average worker that was employed in Elbert County was making about twenty-five bucks an hour. This wage could afford roughly half of the rental units, which there aren't very many, and it could afford less than ten percent of the for-sale housing stock. A ninetieth percentile wage earner, meaning someone who earns more than ninety percent of all other workers in the county, could only afford to purchase roughly twenty percent of the for-sale housing inventory that was available, based on recent prices anyways. More broadly speaking, not just workers, but the lower income population generally is challenged with housing affordability. About thirty percent of all the households living in the county are estimated to be cost burdened. This is a technical term, but what it means is that these households are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing, utilities, excuse me, property taxes, insurance, and so forth. So they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Most of these cost burdened households are those with incomes that are below eighty percent of the area median income. Give you a perspective for a four-person family, that means about ninety thousand dollars of income. For a single person, that's about sixty-five thousand dollars of income. The implication of this is that there's an existing affordable housing need that is likely to be proportionally high. So there's more than sixteen hundred lower income households in the county that are estimated to be cost burdened or have some of their housing problem, like overcrowding. This is a relatively uniform challenge, it isn't isolated to or necessarily concentrated concentrated in any specific town or part of the county. You can see here more than eighty percent of those that are cost burdened, low-income households that are cost burdened are estimated to actually live in the unincorporated county. I'm going to move on from some of this background stuff and get into a projection of future ten-year housing need that we made as part of the assessment. And I'd start by saying that new housing demand is really influenced by one of three things. Number one being future employment or job growth. Number two being lifecycle events or lifestyle changes like aging, children moving out of the house, having a baby and so forth. And number three would be housing replacement needs. So the total projected need over ten years amounted to about three thousand units or three hundred units per year. This compares over the most recent ten years to about a hundred and seventy new units built a year. Although in twenty twenty-one, I think there were closer to four hundred and thirty units built. So a lot of the last ten years has occurred in, actually, the last three years because there wasn't much going on eight, nine, seven years ago. Workforce housing is the largest source of future need, estimated about nineteen hundred units or sixty percent of the total. This estimate reflects the expected job growth in the regional commute shed and the characteristics of the workforce that are typically employed in the sectors that are growing or adding employment. The potential need for senior or other non-working households is estimated about a thousand units over ten years. This accounts for projected increase in both older age and non-working households. The last source of need, the need to replace existing housing inventory is estimated about a hundred and thirty units over ten years. This reflects the age of the housing stock, some of which we reviewed a little bit earlier. But there's always a continual need to replace housing irrespective of whether there's growth, decline, or so forth. Some units are lost to fire, natural disaster, while more are simply removed from the housing inventory because of physical obsolescence or changing market conditions, like a single-family home is converted to rental or vice versa. And I would say that this three thousand units or the ten-year projected need is it's different than a forecast of the effective demand for new construction housing. And that's because not all household growth that's encompassed within those three thousand units, not all but it's likely to occur at income levels that you would need to afford new housing. So about sixty percent of the forecast need is likely to be among households that have incomes at or above eighty percent of area median income. Remaining forty percent is forecast to be below eighty percent of area median income. And I'll get to the importance of this arbitrary eighty percent number or threshold. So just remember that a sizable share of the need is below eighty percent of AMI.
And I'll just quickly interject here before Andy starts to talk about the real estate economics and then we'll have some recommendations. Why, we've given a forecast over ten years. We're not suggesting development occurs equally every year. It's an estimate of need and typically, development is not that steady and consistent. There'll be some years with far more development than others. And recently, with the interest rate hikes, obviously, that slowed down and made housing affordability even more challenging. So it would not be surprising if, in the short run, demand and construction is slower. But what it does reflect is the underlying determinants of demand, the growth of population and households and employment and the changes in lifestyles. And so why each year may be different than an average of the forecast divided by ten, it should give an order of magnitude, you know, we're not going to be precise. We're not that smart, but it's an order of magnitude estimate of the need. And what Andy's going to show is what's likely to be matched by the private market and what the private market's not going to feasibly respond to.
Yeah, so let's start with this. We threw in an example of a small lot, single-family home, suburban density, that has a total development cost of about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per home. This is before any builder profit. The vertical hard costs, meaning the sticks and bricks to build the actual home, the soft costs such as related to marketing or selling the units, and then the land development costs to essentially create a finished lot that you can build on. Those are obviously the three big ticket items that come, that represent roughly ninety percent of this four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Raw land, meaning acquiring unentitled ag land, is a relatively minor cost at less than one percent. And then local permitting fees, impact fees, construction use tax and so forth amount to an additional thirty-five thousand a home or about eight percent of the total cost. And you're probably wondering, you know, what does this mean or why are we telling you this? We use this to guesstimate what price points of housing the private market can feasibly provide and what they can't. So on the larger end of the spectrum, let's consider a four-bedroom home on a ten thousand square foot lot. You're probably looking at a minimum price of six hundred and fifty thousand. That's the cost plus a builder profit. A smaller attached town home or duplex, you know, two bedrooms, could potentially be built for a price around three hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then a more modest multifamily rental unit, you know, one, two, or three bedrooms, will probably need to rent for roughly seventeen hundred to twenty-seven hundred dollars a month to be feasibly developed. So the large home would equate to a unit that's feasible to a household with about a hundred and thirty percent of the median income. The smallest single-family units, we think, could be affordable to about eighty-five to ninety percent of the median income. And then the rental apartment units that we kind of simulated would be affordable to more or less the same income level. So we're talking eighty to ninety percent of median income. You'll note that none of these new construction units, based on contemporary costs and profit and return requirements, none of them are likely to be supplied at prices that are affordable to below that eighty percent of AMI or area median income threshold that I mentioned a couple of slides back. So the implication is that the private market by itself is not going to produce all of the three thousand and forty-seven housing units that we projected as potentially needed. Which leads us to kind of our recommended approach to addressing, you know, the full spectrum of housing needs, both existing and future in the county. When there's an insufficient number of new units available at the top end of the market, you'll have some higher income households who can afford those units, substituting down to lower rungs of the housing ladder. And when there's scarcity of new market-produced units, this tends to contribute to higher prices for housing that would have otherwise been affordable to, say, moderate or middle-income households. And then these households bid up the prices of the next costs here below them and so on and so forth. Thus, our first recommendation is to encourage the private sector to produce an adequate supply of new market-rate housing. And if you're, ideally, if you're successful in doing this, you'll encourage them to over-produce new housing, which is good for consumers and households. So while the units, the market-rate units would be created or sold at market rates, their production helps to promote affordability elsewhere in the market, especially among existing units. One way to encourage this is to continually improve upon the, upon the the planning and approvals process so that any unnecessary complexities, uncertainties, delays, you know, are minimized to the extent they can be. A second point of emphasis should be on regulations and local fees. So that kind of means ensuring that county fees, municipal fees, district fees don't add disproportionately to the cost of a new unit. You could think about establishing fee structures or encouraging other entities to establish fee structures that can vary by unit size or lot size. You can consider how public officials could effectively provide input on some of the state-level regulations that have potential to increase local housing development costs. Because of the current, I guess you'd say, lack of housing diversity, which is a significant challenge, we've recommended to consider at least modifying some land needs regulations that might help to encourage a better mix of housing types or sizes or densities. You know, specific actions or items to focus on could be about open space requirements, minimum lot sizes, establishing some multifamily standards that align with contemporary practices. I think also, when you have any discussion about a more diverse housing mix or more obtainably priced options, you know, the county and the towns could probably also do a better job of promoting or encouraging the use of accessory dwelling units or ADUs to meet some of these future housing needs. ADUs, almost by definition, are affordable housing just because they're small. I know they're permitted by right in a lot of the county, but the county could play a greater role in educating or assisting homeowners to build them. It could consider making ADUs a use by right. It could consider making ADUs a use-by-right on some of the smaller lot sizes, or even doing things like assisting HOAs to revise their bylaws if they're challenging or not allowed to begin with. Within the towns or areas that have centralized utilities, another option would be something like considering whether, whether and if, you know, TAP requirements can be lessened or waived for ADUs. And then going back to what Aaron mentioned to begin this speech, given the critical like interface between housing and economic development, we think it'll be important to develop a long-term coordinated plan for growth. You know, one that, as he said, treats housing and economic development as kind of like symbiotic, not in their own silos. You know, this would be consistent with some of the county's strategic vision to encourage growth and activity. And we think it'd be at least advisable to consider the, kind of the long-term costs and benefits of possibly front-ending some public infrastructure in locations where it could be directed and well-planned, such as your mixed-use, you know, economic development zones. The county could kind of take the lead on developing a long-term financing plan, engaging with some of the intergovernmental partners that operate existing utilities, as well as securing grants and funding sources available, develop public water and wastewater facilities. You might want to consider formally incorporating some development incentives for affordable and/or workforce housing into, you know, the zoning or subdivision codes. There's a need for affordable housing in the county, but most of these projects do require local cooperation, local incentives and public-private partnerships in order to be feasibly developed. Some examples would include fee waivers, you know, buy rights, zoning or density bonuses, lands not super expensive, but land dedications, and then incentives like, you know, rebating or waiving, construction use tax always helps. County and staff, town staff could also kind of assist or begin a coordinated effort to identify sites where you can get control, where they're suitable for affordable housing development, and kind of beginning the due diligence of investigating funding sources from entities like the Colorado Division of Housing or the USDA has multifamily programs. Civic leaders and, again, county or town staff can play kind of a side role in marshaling private resources to help either support the purchase or development of affordable housing specifically for the workforce of the county. So it'd be worthwhile to investigate whether there's philanthropic support for this type of thing and if there's any opportunities to collaborate with existing statewide or community foundations to do so. Because typically the largest and most economical source of affordable housing is going to be existing housing units already here today, it's also important to develop a mindset and policies that are going to help preserve existing housing stock, handle their neighborhoods more generally as naturally occurring sources of affordable housing. So the key on this one is kind of direct your policies and resources towards maintenance or modernization of older, lower-priced existing units. We think in Albert County, it'd also be appropriate to consider the use of employer-assisted housing tools like down payment programs, so you can investigate whether kind of a group or coalition of local employers, including the county itself, could possibly jointly fund an operator program like this. They're essentially designed to promote homeownership, subsidize the upfront cost of a housing purchase, and probably more importantly, they aim to reduce staff turnover and incentivizing commitment of employees in the local community. That wraps our prepared remarks, so hopefully you're awake and attentive and we're happy to discuss any of this, although I know it was a lot.
So, quick question for you. What did you base your assumptions on when you were starting to build this strategy?
Did you hear that, Andy?
No, not, something about assumptions.
Who's closer to a...
What was your assumption when you were planning this strategy? Still not hearing us.
Are you guys hearing that at all?
You sound great. Can you repeat what was just said?
So, real quick, just an open question. When you started building this strategy, what did you base your assumptions on? And what was your, yeah, what were your inputs to this strategy?
I think I understand the question if I answer it in a way that suggests I didn't and I'll ask you to rephrase it. The strategy was based on this combination of interviews with builders, brokers, economic and planning professionals, other stakeholders, the review of a lot of secondary data, forecast of future employment, and translating that to housing needs. And importantly, the slides that reviewed the analysis of the feasibility of building different types of housing, so we could identify what the private sector is likely to build and be able to be profitable at serving needs and what the private sector is not likely to build because the customers wouldn't be able to pay the prices needed for the, to offset the cost and provide for a product. So the strategies are based on thinking about the implications of both the underlying determinants, you know, population, household growth, employment growth, commute sheds and the like, and what's feasible and what's not feasible. And so that's the framework for coming up with these, with these strategies on the slides that, starting on the slide here. Is that close to what you're asking or did I totally misunderstand?
It's close. It gave me a good foundation of the questions that you were hoping to answer. The question I have for you, though, is a little more direct than that. It's what do you think the county wants to be when it grows up? And what are the elements that we think of ourselves as, as we're growing forward and growing into whatever this strategy is that you're thinking of putting in place?
Well, I think there are probably other studies in your own organizations and bodies that are going to make that determination. What we're suggesting is if you want to meet the identified housing needs you already have and position yourself to be able to serve the needs that are identified for the future, what that means is you'll have to make some changes in your land use regulations, your planning regulations to be able to meet existing needs and forecast needs. So I think what that does mean is you'll be, if you want to do that, if the county and the communities within it want to better meet existing needs, there's a lot of high percentage of households that pay more in housing than they would prefer or can, and the others that would be likely to want to come to town if they could. What that obviously means is you'll become less rural or less ag and ranching, and you'll have some areas that will be more urban or suburban with a greater variety of housing types and products than very large properties that frankly only very well-to-do people can afford or people who bought long enough ago where they paid less. So if the county does not want to, or is not in a position to meet changes in the diversity and mix of housing, then my advice is ignore all the recommendations we've listed, you know, if that's not what the county wants to do. But when we were asked to do a proposal, I think the underlying understanding was they wanted to at least have the information base to evaluate how to better meet existing needs and future needs.
Yeah, I would just chime in and say that nothing in this report or the study was intended to make a prediction or tell you what the county should be. You know, that's not up to us, that's up to the...
Citizens.
Land Commission, citizens, county commissioners and so forth. So this wasn't a look at your watch and tell us what time it is kind of thing. We're giving you our unbiased perspective on what the demand and, as Aaron said, need for housing in the next 10 years could be and how that relates to your economic development. So...
Yeah, and why we weren't hired to do the economic development plan, we did, we did offer availability, no offense taken, but we, that also led us to believe that greater economic development, greater tax base or local jobs was a goal. And therefore, we're suggesting that if you don't have adequate housing, you're not going to accomplish that underlying goal that another group is helping you think through. But I hope that helps give you a framework. Again, we were looking at, if you're trying to do beneficial economic development and meet housing needs, what are, what are some of the options that wouldn't be counterproductive or too impossible to try to do? And we did not suggest things that are very popular in other areas, but we didn't think were appropriate for your circumstances. So we did try to tailor these to what we saw as your unique demographic, employment, economic and, you know, land use conditions.
Got it. I'm going to pass it along to Commissioner Buck. He has a question here for you.
Okay.
Sure. I think it's page six of the study talks about the fees, the impact fees, and it says they are comparatively low for the area and advantageous to new housing. How are our fees in relationship to some of the surrounding counties?
We haven't done a fee study. We just know the total costs, which we mentioned, which were about 30, 35 grand for a typical single-family home.
Well, it says they're comparatively low already. They're comparatively low already, so I'm wondering where you compared that to and where you got those numbers.
Well, we...
They said that the other communities, they could exceed 50,000.
Yeah, we got that from the developers who, we interviewed, the actual builders who said everywhere else it costs is more than 50,000 a unit. One of the attractions and the reason we can offer prices for housing lower here than these other areas is because the fees are reasonable.
So our fees are already lower than the surrounding areas?
Exactly.
And then, and then to follow up with that, is what numbers or what should those fees be based on? Should that be based on an inflation increase? Should that be based on what the neighboring communities are charging? Where should we get those numbers from?
Let me interject.
Well, they should be based on the cost of your providing services. There should be a nexus of relationship between the cost of providing whatever the infrastructure or service is for which there's a fee, so that that's the, that's the real thing. But I think what is looking at the other towns and saying, well, they're charging more, so therefore I can charge more, that's certainly what many, I suspect, many communities may consider or even do. But if you want to have more affordable housing and not just, not just, you know, below-market rate housing, but actual market-rate housing that is affordable, then you'll want to maintain that advantage of being perceived as reasonable and sensible by builders who then don't have to raise the cost of the house. You know, these costs get passed on to the consumers. Now, if the costs get too high, what happens is the consumers don't come and the housing doesn't get built, which then exacerbates the housing shortages. But in short, it should be based on actual costs of providing whatever the infrastructure or service is and/or decisions made that, you know, we want this kind of, you know, we see housing as an advantage for, you know, having more people working and living in town, less commutes, less traffic, and, you know, more volunteerism and more local spending and so on. And so in some cases, it might even make sense to have some costs that aren't passed on in the form of fees.
Yeah, we had a fee study that was done in the last couple of years. So I'm imagining that our fees are fairly representative of what they should be in the county, at least from a couple of years ago. And they're always good to update on a regular basis, but we don't have that on our radar for this year or next year, and it sounds like they're already relatively low compared to others in the region.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's, you know, obviously, consumers and people catering to housing consumers think that's terrific. And given that some, you know, comparatively, while pricing, as Andy described, has gone up remarkably, it's still more affordable in terms of new product than some other locations that are more built up and have higher fees. So it is an advantage for attracting households and the builders that serve those households. So I'm certainly not about I did a regularly update and really looked critically at the fees. And I believe in, you know, there is no such thing as a, you know, we're economists, there's no such thing as a free lunch, that, you know, the costs should be, that are created should be adequately charged. But it is, I think, an economic development advantage to not be the highest cost in the area and to not get too concerned about what other groups are charging if they're higher. That should, they may have different circumstances or they may be charging more than they should be. And we've certainly seen some communities that have not had that rational relationship between the cost they really incur and their fees, and now their places do a better job of matching them.
Got it. We got another question for you.
In reading through the report, the draft report that you guys prepared, I got the impression that what you're saying is, is that we don't have affordable housing in this county. Is that correct?
You don't have enough of it.
I don't have, right, exactly. We don't have enough. So the idea is that if our fees are low, then we've got to figure out how to get more affordable housing here so that our people, for example, teachers, whose income level is what, 50% or 80% of AMI, so that we, they can live here rather than having to commute. And I saw your commute numbers and they were atrocious. I mean, most of the people that live here are working in Denver, and the people that are working here are working, live in Denver or...
Yeah, it reminds me, there was a song by a comedian actor singer named Martin Mull. He was an old guy, and he had a song about a nurse and a fire, I think it was a fireman, and they would have fallen in love and married, but he worked the night shift and she worked the day shift, and they were passing each other in cars or something. I don't remember the words exactly, but that's what I thought of when I saw the data, is, you know, think of all the people who were passing each other in opposite directions, and they would all fall in love, or some of them would fall in love if they were actually living and working in the same spot. But that's exactly right, and that's why some of these things, like for teachers or, you know, public service providers, other public service providers, things like employer-assisted housing, multi-family housing, so you can get them in, you know, to know the community, smaller houses that are by definition more affordable, even if the price or store foot could be higher. All of these things will help with attracting service providers. We've worked for some schools, for example, like community colleges or, you know, high schools or things, where they have turned excess parking lots or underutilized property in their own tools into housing for faculty and staff. And because they have the land, that was one cost that, you know, they already owned the land, so that reduced the cost, and then they use some of their budget and other programs to bring the cost down for the teachers or staff. And there's some requirements, you know, they actually have to stay, you know, you get rewarded for staying longer in your positions, you know, than, you know, just staying for a year. But those kinds of things would be helpful. They're challenging, they're not easy to do, but they, some of the ideas we have in here, whether it's the ADUs or the employer-assisted or the more diverse housing product, that's what we were thinking, is sort of that attainable, you know, public service type household that right now we know is likely commuting.
Yep. And that's, if you live out here and you drive on eighty-six, you definitely see the fact that in the morning, you've got a whole bunch of people coming this way and a whole bunch of people going that way. And it's the same thing at night, at four o'clock, five o'clock. Night. The key, the key though, is that what we've got to figure out is, how can we get more affordable housing here to keep those people in town? And that will, again, will help with the, build the other businesses, such as restaurants, stores, et cetera. So, and those are the things that are key, that need to be done. So it's not just the fees, it's more being able to provide a variety of housing to people so that they can afford to live out here.
Exactly. And so, you know, we did a project not long ago in Sheridan, Wyoming, and we went to a restaurant that was great, and then the next time we came back, because I liked it so much, I wanted to go back, and they weren't open. And I said, what the heck's going on here? I was looking forward to that apple pie. And it turned out, they couldn't get staff, so they had to reduce the days of the week, and they basically dropped lunch and went to dinner only for fewer days, because the people they were relying on were coming from outside of Sheridan, and they stopped coming. And so those are the kinds of things, if you want more restaurant options for your citizens, it helps to have some housing where the workers in the restaurant could possibly afford. They'll be more likely to stay.
Well, so I had a, another question for you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you talk a little bit about how the towns have been involved as well? And that, really, this is a study not just for unincorporated areas, but it's also for the towns as well. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure, a couple, well, we had a couple of meetings when we started doing this back in July, I think, where administrative and planning personnel from Elizabeth and Kiowa participated, and I don't think anybody from Simla did. And then as part of some interviews, you know, it was to simply interview the towns but talk to some of the school districts, fire districts. So it is a county-wide study. Some of these recommendations, even on the fees, you know, they're not specifically just the county's impact fees, we're referring to everything, meaning the Elizabeth utility tap fees, or the fire district impact fees and so forth. I don't know if that answers your question, but they have been involved to some extent, although we've been viewing this as a county-wide study, so we're not getting overly focused on one town or the other, if that makes sense.
It does. I think that the question kind of relates as much to the recommendations, that there's, you know, somewhat of an urban bent to some of those that might be more appropriate to the town. And I imagine with most of the recommendations, that the, you know, the towns can take a look at those and accept what they would like, and the county can take a look at those and accept, you know, those things that we might want to implement. It's not necessarily a you must do all of these, it's more of a, here's a variety of different types of tools that we might want to use in our toolbox at various different times to allow for more affordable housing.
Well said, and absolutely true. We're not trying to mandate
Right, Elizabeth builds all the multifamily housing.
Yeah, or telling each community or the county to do all of these things. You know, my experience with economics and the law suggests that when you try to mandate one-size-fits-all people, or things that communities or people or businesses don't want to do, they'll spend more energy trying to avoid the mandate or the requirement than doing it. So you're much better off picking each community or the county, picking those strategies or policies that resonate, that fit with the priorities and the values, and that they can really get behind. And, you know, sometimes it's better to do one or two things really well than trying to do, you know, ten things. And there's only so much bandwidth and capacity. So I do think that's well said, and some things, if they fit the specific local situation better than others, those are the ones that should be used. And if someone's not excited about a particular strategy, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to have the commitment to it anyway, so I wouldn't worry about it.
Got another question for you.
Thank you for your time. I think the presentation is excellent. I do, one side comment, as I used to work in aviation, real estate development, and down in Texas, a fast-food restaurant actually built an apartment complex in order to provide housing for their, they couldn't get employees, and so they actually built a housing project or an apartment complex
Oh, that's
Right behind, right behind their facility. It was pretty amazing. But do you have case study examples for counties that might kind of be similar to us, or something like that, that we could look at, successful approaches?
I think what's
These are great, these are great recommendations. It'd be nice to see case studies that show actual implementation.
Well, some of these are frankly based on, you know, we didn't do case studies, but having done literally hundreds, over fifteen hundred studies, we have a general sense of what works and doesn't work, so these are ones that we thought would work. I don't have anything other than what we've described in the report off the top of my head, but we'll try to think of, if we can find any people that we think have done a particularly good job, we're more than happy to provide some contact information and some information on examples. I guess I will tell you, my, I love this story, by the way, about the restaurants, and I think it illustrates my bias, which is every place, like every person, is different. And so I spend more time trying to figure out that place or that person, and not worrying too much about what other people or other places are doing, because there's usually some difference that doesn't show up in the case studies. But having said that, we'll give it some thought, and we'll try to send a care package of some ideas or examples that can get passed on to you.
Thank you.
I think part of the, well, not a challenge, but your situation is pretty unique. I mean, a lot of this stuff is developed based on our own, our own case studies in other counties that are somewhat similar, but, you know, you're going to be grappling with ex-urban to suburban growth, and as somebody mentioned before, what do you want to be when you grow up? You know, there aren't any real central utilities, other than the towns and metro districts, which isn't that unusual, but I'm rambling because I don't think there is a county in Front Range or Colorado that you could find, hey, there's a case study for doing, modifying our land use regulations. A lot of them, it is driven through the towns. I'm thinking of, like Greeley and Weld County, and we did include a couple of examples, I think, from there on, like the employer-assisted housing, but to Aaron's point, we can try and beef that up a little bit and give you some additional.
Yeah, there are some, and generally they're in the footnotes, which is probably not the best place to highlight them, but there are examples of other Colorado communities that have done similar things on ADUs and, for example, a sliding scale on fees, you know, that's based on the house size rather than a one-cost, one-fee, you know, per house. So we did try to put in examples where we had them of places that, they weren't necessarily similar, but they'd done similar programs.
Right, I think Greeley had actually revised their land use regulations too, to allow for some very small lot housing to
Right.
For a more variety of housing.
So I think we can do, it's hard to find a place that has all your characteristics, because it's really unique, that's what makes it interesting, but I think we can beef up and give you some more examples of places that have done
Some of these
Some of these things, and give you the codes or whatever the, you know, the example is. So good points, and you have the best story of the night with the fast food and building their own housing, so you should get a, you should get a special point tonight for that story. That's amazing.
All right, thank you very much. I got another question for you.
So just one last question, and I'll leave you guys alone for a little while. In the footnotes on page seven, you talk about the fruition Colorado development in Keansburg. Can you elaborate a little more on that?
Andy, this is the manufactured homes plan, large-scale example of manufactured workforce housing.
I think this ties to the prior question. We can try and, I don't have the answer for you. This isn't a project we're involved in ourselves, we just know of it, and we thought it was a good example of, hey, you wouldn't be the first person to do this type of thing, but we can
Yeah, this is, there is, basically, this was highlighted by Fannie Mae, which is, has, it does have a case, it has a case study write-up, if you click the link, and it talks about what their takeaways were for it. So, and one of the things was, it's sort of, there's sort of a negative notion of manufactured housing, but actually with today, with the much heightened standards and much better construction activity, it's not, you know, manufacturing can be, manufactured housing can be very nice, and it is a hell of a lot cheaper if you can build it in bigger increments to build, and it's faster. So in this case, that was part of it, is how they were able to build more scale than typical. So, but we can, I don't remember, we read the case study, I don't remember all the details, but I remember that there's a link to it that provides some more. And I will tell you that we had, in Sheridan, just because it comes to mind, we had an employer that we interviewed, who was also, who built, who wanted to add manufactured housing to their site, that they were growing rapidly and they couldn't get workers, so their strategy was to build manufacturing housing on their site and then give that to their own workers. The problem they were having was the community didn't permit manufactured housing in a business park, and we thought that was actually a great idea to do it. So don't have more details off the top of my head, but we can, we'll try to add to it.
No, thank you for that. Commissioners, do we have any other questions for the consultants here? No, I think we've gotten all of our commissioners' questions answered on your presentation.
Well, thanks for letting me talk to you after a long evening. We appreciate all of the staff and others, and I hope you're enjoying the study. We'll try to add a few things Things. And, you know, thanks for your tolerance on a long evening.
No, we certainly appreciate that, and the commissioners are very grateful for your time as well. Thank you for presenting with us.
Okay, good night, everyone. Bye.
Yep, good night.
The last item on the agenda is adjournment, if you'd like to do that.
I move to adjourn.
So done.